United States of America. And here the Republic of the nations stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, will you call, do your call?
Councilor Coker.
Here.
Councilor Bjarne.
Here.
Councilor Whitney.
Here.
Councilor Coker.
Here.
Mayor Hollis.
Here.
Councilor Kenyon.
Here.
Councilor Plato.
Here.
All right, thank you guys. Only order of business today is 4.1, the discussion of the public safety fee. And just as a reminder, work sessions are for discussion only. We do not do public comments and we do not vote on anything. So any decisions made from this session are kept to ourselves and made by vote at the next public meeting. I'll have the floor, James.
Okay, um, just to give you guys an update. We saw that the initial questions sent to our city attorney were answered. Um, and just one follow up question. Or essence, send that to me a few minutes after it was asked via email also text, I've not heard a response, so. You have not answered that question. It's kind of a moot point in my opinion. The last question was, what is this specific for us? Make some, uh, what he means legal for cities to use. It didn't ever. Uh, I don't know how specific you want it to be, but when he does answer, I can give that to you. But I will just point out that you read about a lot of these other cities use leads as well for their public safety fees or service fees. They're called different names, but um, if you read the all of the new one. Just keep going. They mentioned that there are 50, 5-0 city in order to have similar. You have city services fees, public safety fee, provide different names, but it's all attached to utility bills, same as ours. You know, and this idea didn't spring from nowhere when it was brought up here. Now, I will say our city is uh, the highest I have seen. I gave you, I stopped, I stopped at 10 examples. I went through 10 cities. Ovalos, current charge is 1731 a month. Sandy, 450, Metrus 450, Gresham, it's $15. Orin City, 650, the New York $4. Creswell, I couldn't find the amount, I know it's fluctuated. I'm saying with Central Point, Piders $9, Albany $1. So I stopped directly at 10. Also provided some specific ordinances from Central Point as well. And the NEDA. In their ordinances. You can do that, so that's the information. And then provide.
So in, in looking through all these. Public safety fees, are most of them attached to the water bill? Or?
Yeah, water or other utility levels. And then what cities provide. Just reading through.
Before we get too much further into this, I do want to state. I won't be participating. I have a conflict of interest and it's an actual conflict because I am married to the spouse of a city employee. And is there any other conflicts of interest? Melissa Bjornson.
Yeah, I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest because I'm on the volunteer roster with the fire department.
Um, I'll declare a potential conflict of interest because my brother has a contract with his personal business with the city.
Thank you, guys.
So the, the penalty is kind of all over the board. Uh, the NEDA. Charges a maximum fine of $360. But that can be let me every single day if the fee is not paid. So it's like a DQ penalty. They could have charged someone $360 per day. If these are not paid, they talk about going to collections, collections, even super. And a lot of them do the same things that we do. You know, if a person's certain percentage below the federal poverty line. They don't put a platform of the safety fee rate discount.
Several of these that I've read so far. Are for adding services to their communities. And some of them don't even have their own piece of fire apartments. It's to help have plan.
Sorry, what do you do with this contract? Plain County Sheriff's Office.
Come out, are you Creswell?
So when looking at the fee amounts with the list that you were able to gather. Do you see any correlation between city size and fee amounts or is it just random?
It's kind of random because, you know, like a big city like Gresham is charging $15. Now, they were charging 750 a couple of years ago, but they raised it. So, I mean, that's a big city, it's pretty high. But Sandy, relatively big, they're only charging 450. Albany's 9, and again. It's like, it changes from year to year depending on. What they need. I didn't find it direct, so.
I would like to ask a question. Is this? As you said, we passed a rule. So. Does that mean to collect from anybody legally that they have a, have to have a written contract?
I've not seen that specifically addressed. It was simply, yes, simply levy with the utility.
Essentially the law.
Now, another question, did they?
That's from my chair.
Yes. So the advice, it's not, by the time you break it down and make the thing, this not with the, the time you're gonna spend together.
You're talking about the lien, I think it depends on the situation and how much they owe. And really, I think that just speaks, personally, I believe we need the fee. And like I said before, I don't like it, I don't want it, but I think it's needed. But without any ability to enforce it. I just don't think it was as. I don't think it's a fair process for the citizens, especially the ones that are paying it by choice. Um, I think it's important that we have something in our ordinance that allows us to enforce it and enforce it in a way that's not going to potentially cost a lot of money, as it might with the lien. When you're looking at filing fees and the possible attorney time and that sort of thing. And I remember that being part of our discussion initially, that a lien might have some additional cost to it. But it was an option.
Yeah, I mean, in practice. You want weight or you put a lien on it because you can only ask for a, a, oh. Um, so you wouldn't do it right away. That's why a lot of cities will send people to collections. Because that's quicker and there are fees that go on top of collections. And well, like the one city's charging $360 a day up to. Yeah, so there's lots of ways to do it, but if you're doing a lien, you want to make it your file. So wait a couple of years before you.
I have another question here.
Go ahead.
These people that have the safety committee, I mean, safety fee or ordinance, they call it. Between calls and difference. Was the levy put out there?
Actually, one.
You know, and what happened there at the levy?
Yeah, so City of Creswell, somewhere inside, somewhere to us. Back page, it says, June 16th, City Council placed a public safety levy on the ballot. Which would provide, I mean, provided by the public safety fee, the major fail.
So it was put in there, there's a safety fee on the bottom. That's what the levy was.
A levy was to raise money for the same thing that the safety fee was needed for.
That's, that's.
To strike us.
So the, as you know, these people had a levy out there in the past. And then as far as the rest of the cities you gave us. Was a levy put up before the voters, before the safety fee was put in there?
My guess is that it's probably the case in some of, some of these cities. I think cities may, maybe more forthcoming with that information than others. Just depend on what they want to put on that side.
Need like 10 of those, like 250.
Yeah, um, that is mentioned in City of Albany's first page, City of Albany. In order to increase the fee. All operations fee. Okay. One of the cities where. And they do, there's a, by meter size. So three fourths meter, starting at $9 a month, which they say is 9 cents. Meters in all the units. Oh, sorry, 90% are one nation. So actually all of it, 4% of, of the fees they collect are at 2250 a month. Then 3% are $9 a month. But let's see if they have a, a 10 inch meter. They have one business that has that, they charge them $1,890 per month. Wow, that must be pretty good for some of these. As you can see, we've got 40 businesses saying $144 a month for the 3 inch meters. Kind of interesting, what they, the breaking, break it down. Commercial rates versus. Commercial rates.
I see that Central Point has a section about public 25% discount for stream hardship. So. Um, so like Creswell, Creswell says, um, the imposition of fees shall be calculated on the basis of the number of residential or non-residential units supported without regard to the number of water meters served about.
That makes it, if I couldn't find what their, their speed was. You know, I think the earliest I saw, if I recall, was 2012. That may not be the earliest, because again, I stopped at 10. City living off the 50 plus. That's the oldest one, but since so long. And it's Gresham.
Central Point has a late fee.
I can email everyone the links, this information. There's a lot of, I just, I mean, kind of the information. The websites, I must say, uh, so do a much better job than now. It's, that's almost probably, maybe. Yes, it's pretty slow, website, videos and whatnot.
The NEDA definitely has this attached to their water. One of those into the water sewer gangs.
Yeah, a lot of them just that utility bills, so. So what's the capital be providing power, which is pretty rare.
Yeah, and there's also says that delinquents, um, an account is delinquent, public safety fee is not fee. Try to do date shown on the utility bill. And it outlines a little bit of what they can do to collect that. This is including termination of water and sanitary sewer services. So those cities are definitely connecting it. Making it a part of that utility bill.
Hey, James.
Yeah.
Can you possibly email those out? I haven't gotten those.
Yeah, no, nobody got an email. At the time that I can email that to you right now.
Thank you.
Add me to that as well, please, James.
Yes. Links are on their way.
Thank you.
Thing I would, I would say, everything that I have seen that you've put out here looks like they've done stuff the right way to begin with. They put everything out, they talked to the public, even though maybe the public wouldn't understand anyhow, but they put it out there. Um, and I think that's where our biggest problem is and was. And unless we do something about that, we're going to be going over this for years to come.
I agree, I wrote down better communication was part of my notes on here, so.
Absolutely.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, more transparent, which would be helpful, too. Yeah.
Well, and they're the ones that are paying it. Excuse me, you know, they need to know where it's going. And I've talked to so many people that they won't pay it because they were never told where it's gonna go. They don't know where it's going. If it's going in the general fund, then why are we doing this or why are we doing that? So.
As much as I don't like it, I would like to see something that is attached to our utility bill to make it more enforceable. That way, it's, it's fair for everybody. So you can't just choose to not pay it because you don't want to. Other people pay it and are supporting the whole process. You know, for people that can't afford it, we do have a process set up to help with that. And assist people with, you know. I don't know what you wanna call it, but.
The one thing that, the only thing that would concern me on that, and I agree with you there. But the only thing that would concern me is our bill is called a water bill. It's not a utilities bill. And even if we transparently say it's a utility bill. Some people have contracts when they signed up for water. So then what do we do? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I.
Do we have to have them?
Yeah, so every year, when we raise based on CPI, we don't ask people to sign a new contract.
No, but that's right on the water bill. I mean, that actually is something that has to be, it's not a, it's not a levy, it's not a fee. It's something that.
I don't, I don't have the contract in front of me to look at it, but. I just don't, it's worth looking and seeing how it connects, if it matters or not.
My understanding, probably Bobby, that the reason you want it on the utility or a water bill is that people's water can be shut off if they're not paying that fee.
Not because I want their water shut off, but to make it enforceable.
What does that mean, enforceable?
That would include shutting somebody's water off if needed. Um, and if you're not able to pay this fee, I mean, we do have an option set up within our fee that allows you to not have to pay it and to not have that penalty. I mean, there is something there to assist with that.
And I don't think they should combine it. Because that makes me, I mean, this is only what, so 24 or something? Uh, we view it all the time. And I, I can't see a question, something we're not getting right now. And being, and shit people want. And, fine.
But on the same hand, I pay my safety fee. Okay, I don't like to pay it. I have children at home, you know, have a lot going on in my personal life, a lot of expenses, metal expenses. But I pay it and to me personally, it's frustrating when I think of Joe Blow down the street not paying it because he simply chooses not to because he disagrees with it. Yeah, I'm paying it and I'm paying into it because it allows our city to be safer and for us to maintain services. How was that fair to me? You know, or anybody else that's paying it because it's the right thing to do. I will sit there to the people that are paying it and we have people that are just choosing not to. Um, you know, like I said, we do have a process built in here for people that can't afford it to be able to be exempt. You know, there, there is a process to help them. And on top of that, the state is, is rolling out a new water program to help people with utility bills that are lower income. You know, we already have low income help for people that, for electric bills. We, you know, there's a lot of things out there to help people that necessarily don't have a lot of money. But really, this is for our city to help us maintain services. It isn't to add more, it's to try to maintain what we have. I know that if I call 911, I sure hope, you know, I get an ambulance. And I think, um, the less we cut from our budget, the less chance we have of that happening. I really do, that's, that's one of the reasons I continue to pay my, want to know that if I call 911, hopefully somebody will be there if it's an emergency. I think it's supposed, I'm sure that happens.
Yeah, keep in mind, there's some folks that don't agree with either water bill because they say that they don't use that much. Use up to the greatest rate that everything should be appropriated, it's unused. Opposite is hard to be there.
Well, I think the last time I called 911 was when Abby was the baby, 17 years ago.
Well, it's changed in that 17 years.
Yeah. You know, but I wouldn't use it.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Coker. Thank you. I just want to add in there, when this public safety fee was mentioned and way back when we had those meetings. The turning off of the water due to non-payment was one of the things we were all highly against. So that's like, that's just making the public even more skeptical on this by hearing that you want to turn the water off, that it, it's not right.
I don't think anyone said they necessarily want turning one's water off. That's just one of the options we've seen from other cities. So what we've seen from other cities so far is turning off utilities like water. Uh, going to collections and lees.
Yeah.
We're in collections and we're using our own means.
So just to state again, I. Don't like the idea of trying to people's water off. That is not what I'm saying I want to do, but I think we need to find a way to make it more enforceable. That appears to be the way to do it unless there's another. Way that makes it enforceable. And not a huge expense for the city to do so in a way to make the public safety fee. Fair for everybody that should be paying it. Have people paying it as they should. And just choosing not to.
Well, we don't get to vote here, so we have to go somewhere else to do that. Is there anything else that needs to be covered before we do?
Well, I would like to receive more information on. A more detailed proposal from. City staff on what a good safety fee amount would be. Right now, we can do with less, you know, what that number would be. And I think that matters in this process. And, you know, if we get rid of this. What are we looking at? What additional cuts are we possibly looking at for this fiscal year?
But I think cutting will take to be what it does next year. Rather than this year, but this. Kind of what we're trying to get at with the staff reports. To give this. Generally made clear from recent fire that would mean. Cutting staff, actual staff positions, right, we find and speaking. What I understood from the most staff reports. And again, that will be next year.
And then next year. You probably won't have part of. Standing correct. Not this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year.
There's. There's rumors of more is coming out. I don't.
So, so the answer. Until we see it, the answer is no. So that's.
Yeah, it's the same here. Like great, I think it's great grand. You can apply for. Are we gonna get her? I don't know. Sure hope so.
Is there any more questions on James on what he's brought to us? Any more questions or? Change proposals to the ordinance or any of that stuff to get out and discuss?
Other than before we end up making a decision, I think it's important. To have a town hall and to really. Have better communication with the keep the community and make this a more transparent process.
I agree.
Town Hall is the next thing on my list. So we did talk about doing one in October, and I think if that is a direction that we want to go. It would make sense to set a date and then we start getting stuff together because that's going to be a lot of information. And I think some of the information brought here would be helpful to go to a town hall.
Maybe get information on the other cities and really. Have a better idea exactly what each city is paying. And then a little more about their enforcement tools that they use. And what remedies they use to enforce. Their public safety fee. Would be really helpful.
Well, that's what I was trying to say about showing off utilities. Non. Collections, they need to. Leads to me that I've seen so far. And. Think of. And of course, lately, that's just adding to the. Trying to think of what else to do. I'll say it's not like you can say, well, if you don't pay the public safety fee, the cops won't come to your house.
Exactly.
Yeah. Remedies.
It sounds like any changes we would possibly come up with would actually have to be. According to what I'm seeing in the answers that we got would have to be. A whole new. Ordinance.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter if there's minor changes or anything, so.
That's right. Repeal and replace.
Pardon?
Repeal and replace. Do you want to talk about a date for a town hall or a council meeting, or do we want to talk about that today?
Talk about it now.
As early as possible.
Well, I was thinking October eighth.
October eighth.
A Saturday. I think it's makes more sense to me that something like this, we hold on a weekend. And then we have it at the high school atrium like we did last time.
Is that enough time? To have something with all the information together?
I really think we have most of the information that we need here. We just need to put it together in a presentation format.
Well, I definitely would like the information on the other. Cities and to. Really have a better idea of what each city. Is charging for public safety fee.
I think you could probably look that up on your books.
Yeah, yeah.
Service charge. What do you call it? Fee for services. There's a schedule. Every city has a schedule.
But I think, yeah, I'm happy that having something available to present at a town hall. That really shows that information would be great.
I think combining the staff reports that we already looked at a couple of meetings ago. Yes.
And looking at our budget for next fiscal year, potential budget.
Think also, or at least what I've heard. Is. Maybe where it's going in the budget and what it's being spent for. You know, public safety fee, police, fire and ambulance. If it's going, that's what it's touted to be. Then it should be going to that, not going to someplace else and then give it up so you can free up money to help staff. Us, whoever, you know, I mean, that's it's just something. It might be petty, but.
That is what it's doing. That's what the safety fee goes into. The police and fire departments.
Right.
In lieu of the amount of taxes that used to go into those departments. So those taxes are then freed up to support the rest of the general.
And see, and that's what people don't understand. They think. Or some think that. That freed up money. Is basically the public safety fee. They don't understand that. And I think if they understood what it does. It would make a lot of difference. Just the transparency thing. I mean, not everybody's gonna understand that. But a lot of people will and a lot more people would possibly pay.
And I think it's important. So like I know that the city entered a contract with Rick. I think it's important to recognize that there are things that we're not able. To do as a city because there's not enough money to pay for everything that needs done. You know, we, you know, there's complaints about the parks that you're seeing all over on Facebook. You know, the money's not there to support that and it's because we're supporting a lot of things. And making sure that we're able to continue to support our community as best we can is. Is good and paying for the public safety. Was so vital, important to to our community. But it's not, you know, it's not the only thing the city does to be. Able to be a certain. It's a lot of things that we have to be able to do and maintain. I think it would be good to have an idea of. You know, over the last however many years, five, 10 years, the things that we've given up. Or haven't. Been able to complete like we need to. Because of staffing. Be nice to have a better picture of all of that.
Is there a couple of counselors that would like to be involved in setting up a town hall? It's a lot of capacity. Needed. Lots of research, presenting. Be able to explain this stuff. Studying.
Honestly, I don't know if I have the capacity. I don't think we're all.
Yeah, but it's not just a matter of being there. It's doing all the homework and putting all the numbers together for all the places. I mean, obviously, staff is a huge part, but we can't put it all on them. It's really. Needs to be a joint effort.
My, my recommendation would be to have the entire council up there.
Yeah.
That it's not just.
Absolutely.
You know, volunteer to be under fire.
Yeah. I just mean the putting this stuff together and deciding all these things we're talking about. What's, what's the bullet points? Stuff.
You know, who can help me with some research?
That's what I'm talking about. And I'm happy to help. But I'm not enough for. I know you would be great, Dawn.
I don't think anyone likes my opinions. I don't see why I should bother sharing.
Her opinions absolutely matter, Counselor Kenyon.
Amy is, it's ridiculous, the whole project. So do you want my help? I can all do it. I don't see why we don't go for maybe like raising it up to like a hundred fifty dollars a month so we can increase our police, we can rebuild this building. We can put more staff in the fire department, maybe even build a swimming pool.
That's an idea. It's an idea.
We knew you would. How about Amtrak? There's only like a million and a half we need to warn.
Well, I mean, there are different ways to structure the fee. Some of them based on the size of the meter, et cetera. So. Big businesses are paying more. Essentially. Tough. It might be tough to do it based on income.
Well, keep in mind, this town hall is also an opportunity for counselors to give the information out and then get the feedback. Get a feel for what people think. And then from there, make your decisions on where you're going. You know, maybe you get people that come in that are very understanding and. Feel more educated and more they they get why it's there. Maybe you have. Pitchforks and there is no changing people's feelings. And that's a different direction. But I'm just saying, I think. A town hall to be really transparent. Try to make up for what happened last year and and be more proactive on getting this out there. Community involvement.
I mean, the cricket machine.
Counselor Coker and Counselor Bjarnsen, do you have anything?
I'm currently trying to figure out how I can be of help. I'm going through my calendar as we speak.
Nothing here.
I mean, I would like to have help. From the wide. Range of folks so that. People know that the information researched was compiled from broad. Spectrum of folks.
Well, I can do some.
Well, I truly feel like you two are the best because you're kind of very different spectrums, your viewpoints, and that could be a positive for us in making this.
I don't, I don't feel like the town hall is about bringing viewpoints. I think it's about bringing.
Yeah.
And information.
Absolutely.
And that is what it is, you know. I just don't have the capacity to commit a lot of time to it.
So we're going to be bringing information to the public about what we've been doing for the last year. Not bringing information to the public about what we plan to change.
That could be a question.
Needs to change.
I think it's a town hall for information gathering and information sharing. I don't think as a council, we're. All of us are in agreement or at a place where we can bring a proposal of this is exactly how we want it to change. I don't think we're. To that step or to that place as a group as a whole. So I don't think that's something that we bring. To a town hall, but I think bring in information about other cities. What they charge, what they don't charge, how they enforce. And bring in information of what our public safety fee does for our community and what it's going to do in the future for our community is really important. And because. We do know that we have budget issues. So I think bringing that information forward, bringing the information forward and from the staff reports. Is important, you know, to make that very clear, you know, what that means. And I, I wouldn't want to see the staff necessarily be present because I don't want to see any staff be targeted. And negative. Because I think, you know, that could happen. But I think it's important to see.
Some, I just an idea. One thing that we could include in the information at the meeting. Is you could do some research on. Salaries. I happen to know that I'm. My job, I'm paid less, less than half of. Normal city administrator wages. I know that the police chief is. I think one of the lowest. You know, I think he said he was the lowest paid chief in like down. Not just like county, state. You know, I think it might be helpful. Some of that information too, so public can see where the money is going. A lot of times when. When people do a public information request for salaries, it's also good to include furs, overtime, et cetera. So, oh my God, it looks like. People are making over a thousand. They're not actually, it's not take home, that's including all benefits, et cetera. And I think it's important to. Pair it to. Other city.
And you agree. The other thing would be whatever comes of the town hall meeting and the ordinances and all of that stuff. It's going to come down to the same thing. How is it going to be enforced? So that's something else we're going to have to think about. Not that what we have now is good. Not that what we may come up with is good. But. If we're going to put it out there, we're going to have to have some way to enforce it. I hate saying that because I don't like the idea.
I am right there with you on that.
But. You know, I just, I think it's gotta be completely transparent, not blindsided.
Agree completely. Just all of that.
Don't want to wear a bulletproof vest. I don't want to wear a bulletproof vest. I'm sorry.
But I do have some excellent ones.
I'll eat about five.
You can't remember.
My wedding day over. But seriously, I think we do need to do something where the city is involved, the citizens. Because they're the ones that are having to do it. I mean, we are too, but the city has to be upfront. Because we haven't been for so long. People are so skeptical and they think the worst. So I want us to be not liked per se, but I want us to be respected again.
I mean, it goes back to, you know, definitely how people view the city. I mean, back to Zimmerman area, a lot of a lot of respect and trust was broken without when people were looking at how their tax dollars were spent. And you're right. And what that looked like, whether, you know, regardless as to what the findings were when they investigated it or not, does it matter? Because it changed everybody's perception and it's really bled into all of this and still continues to be a part of how people perceive us today. So I think helping to change that would really go a long ways.
We have to build trust. It seems like anything else. Once you lose it, it's easy to lose. It's really hard to build it back.
Yes.
And it's going to take all of us, especially all of us.
All right, what are we leaving from this meeting and asking, or are we asking anything from staff?
I just.
You had a couple of things.
Yeah, I just want a better idea of, you know, a potential public safety fee amount that would be appropriated. Be able to cover for this, this coming fiscal year and that might look like. And to get that information from our finance director. I'm, you know, we already talked about the better communication. And I know that you've been looking at the website and it'd be great to have more information there, but I don't know. There's a lot to do, so. So the time is stretched.
Obviously, I can compile an Excel spreadsheet that has all 50 other cities if you want. What, how much their public safety fee is. Put in what it has been, highest, lowest, a lot of butt to weight, put in what year they started, what enforcement mechanisms to use and whether or not they failed.
Those are actually some really good places to start.
But some of this research will require calling these cities because like I said, I don't think every city's been put on their website admitting they had two big levies or whatever.
Or.
Okay.
What were some of those things you mentioned? If they'd had a failed levy, the amount, I'm assuming, highest.
Yes, before you fully check the fees and.
And started.
How long and then enforcement? Okay.
But honestly, looking at how much they pay is you might as well get their whole entire budget and analyze it because it's based on their city, their revenue, their population, their cost, how many staff, yada, yada, yada.
It's probably not apples to apples.
No, but it's a dollar amount that allows people to see that other people are paying something.
But so far, ours is packed.
I think we're still.
Out of all.
I think we looked when this came out and it was highest.
But we also probably have entirely exemptions because 75% of the population of which is distributed law thing.
We have 300 exemptions, right?
Yeah, I was trying to get the number. Okay. 289.
What percentage is not paying? I mean, 73% is paying, is changing all this that are less. Okay. 289 exemptions.
Yes, that's, I love today.
We can tell you with my experience at my job. Some people, even if they have qualified exemption, they can pay it, they'll pay it. What they qualify for, you know, you want to run into people that feel that way and look that way.
I wonder how many people we have that are paying more than one question. A lot of people, many of them.
It's a good question.
I haven't seen.
You haven't seen.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear what Counselor Kenyon just said.
Oh, I just said, I wonder how many of our citizens are paying extra. And Jackie confirmed that she doesn't know of any.
So that 289 or 298 is not.
There's a number of granted exceptions.
Hopefully it's that, granted, I mean, they're, they don't pay at all, right?
Correct.
But that's just the exemptions. Number of people not paying, I don't know that.
Our last time when we had Colleen present, she said of the people that are supposed to pay 73% of their full pay. So I did not include the exemptions.
Does anybody have anything else? Counselor Coker and Counselor Bjarnson, do you have anything else?
No, Mayor, I don't.
Thank you. No. Thank you. Yeah, let's look at that and see if there's conflict with anything else going on. And then, yes, well, anything in the city, let's see how that works out and obviously check with the auditorium.
The ducks are away, so.
Okay, good. That was what Scott was checking too.
The time was about to melt.
It would probably be in an evening. That's, that's when we've done them before.
Five, six, seven.
Yeah, probably that five o'clock hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why do you?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
We are having those council meeting first.
It's Thursday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you all for attending. Meeting adjourned at 8:07 PM.
Thank you.